All right, I'm going to, only a minute late. All right. Call to order, the City of San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting for December 11th, 2023. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm supposed to read this. Just to remind everyone that this, members of the public, that this meeting is a limited public forum for public comment. Speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item and if speaking during the general public comment, they must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules or the city rules on decorum and civility, they'll be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended for the evening. Okay. All right, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then we'll move on to presentations. I have three, all right, and I'm gonna say an extra thank you to Crystal for printing all this out, because I am sometimes disorganized, so. All right, we're gonna do our presentation for City Coin to community volunteers Paul Bryant, Mark Reynolds, and Bob Bowyer, so if they can all come up front. I talked to my colleagues and I figured this was a good way to get more people into the audience, because why else would we be here today, right? All right, normally we do only one of these at a time, but I don't know, I figured it's my last meeting, I get to, you know, have priority and do three. One of the things we started to do this year as mayor is to present a City Coin to a community volunteer, and so this time we're gonna do three. One of the areas that I focused on this year is on recreation, and we as a council have made that a priority, and so decided to pick the heads of softball, baseball, and soccer. So, all right, that's good. My kids didn't do a lot of those sports, we did other ones, so have to remember. And this is really, I mean, for me, San Carlos, one of the things that makes San Carlos such a great place to live, work, and play is our community volunteers. We are so fortunate in our community, we have, it's been interesting, we've had some coin winners come back, because they just wanna be groupies and sit in the back and see who gets the next coin. Oh, they're over there, they moved on me! So they are, they I think have come to since just about every meeting, just to help support and thank the community volunteers as well. So, we'll do this a little differently, we'll do, I'll give you all the coins at once, instead of doing one at a time, but I'll read your bio separately. Okay. First is gonna be Paul. Okay, so Paul became involved in AYSO in 2014, when he started coaching his oldest daughter in the six U division, I think that's when they all kinda just swarm into one circle. He joined the AYSO board in 2015 as a division coordinator. In 2018, he became league director for seven U through 12 U, in addition to being division coordinator. Paul became regional commissioner for San Carlos AYSO in 2020, and has been in charge of the league for the past four seasons. Throughout this time on the AYSO board, Paul likes to nerd out on player and team performance data, making way, way too many plots in MATLAB and spreadsheets, so. In addition to his AYSO volunteering, Paul is on the Britain Acres Walk-A-Jog Committee as the Facilities League, and he couldn't do it without his amazing wife Hillary, and inspiration from his three daughters who are at BA, Arroyo, and Central. So, thank you, Paul. All right. All right. Next is, Mark Reynolds is next, so, all right. So, Mark is with the San Carlos Little League, and he let me throw out the first pitch at Little League, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later, about how stressful that was. I told Mark that I pitched, my wife told Mark that I pitched in college, so it added all this extra stress in me that I was gonna, you know, bounce it about forty feet from the plate. But I didn't, it was a strike, and I was much relieved. So, but Mark has been manager or assistant coach since March of 2013, on the Board of Directors since September 2019, now entering his fourth year as president. He's been assistant coach for San Carlos Mission since September 2020. He's been a head coach or assistant coach since August of 2012 for AYSO, and he's been the co-manager game day coordinator from December 2017 to June of 2022 for San Carlos United, so, thank you, Mark. And last, we have Robert Bowyer. So, Bob, thank you. Bob is with AYSO. Oh, SCYSA, I'm sorry, I'm like reading the wrong thing here. So, I was reading how you said you were completely surprised by this, but you shouldn't be, because you've done so much for the community, and we are happy to recognize you. He's been SCYSA President, Park and Rec Commissioner, Tournament for TODS Assistant Director, he's with Cub Scout PAC in the past, PAC 65 and the council, and outside of San Carlos, he has worked on the foundation for Autistic Children and Autism Speaks, so, thank you, Bob, for your service.
So, on behalf of the San Carlos Little League Board members, today's board, as well as our previous board members, as well as all the volunteers who have coached over the years, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the council members, I thank you to the city folks who are here and support us, cannot thank you enough for all that you do to support youth sports, and for just recognizing individuals like us and who try and do what we can to make the city a better place. Thank you for that. So, I love youth sports for two reasons. One, it really is a great way to, to help bring out the best in kids, and it helps teach them life lessons, and it's just a great place to really honestly build community. This place is such an amazing city, and just the community when it comes together over a sport, and the amount of stories I hear from families saying their kids met in T-ball and they became friends all the way, you know, throughout like high school, I get so many of those stories, so it's incredible. Four reasons why I coach, I get that question a lot, one, to support this great city that we live in, so thank you for that. Two, I love the opportunity to see potential in kids and to be able to take out the best in them, and it's like, what if you get those opportunities to, to coach James Outman, who, you know, ten years ago was playing San Carlos Little League, and he's now starting centerfielder for the Los Angeles Dodgers. So, those are those amazing moments of kids who grow up here, you never know who you're gonna be able to coach. Third, I had some amazing mentors and coaches when I was a kid, all the way from elementary school all the way through, through college, so if I could do a fraction of what they did to make me who I am, I would be super, super happy. And last, of course, the reason why I really coached is because of my three kids, and the time I get with them between practices and games and, you know, moving to and from those and talking about, talking about everything, it's awesome. It's going by so quickly, and we were joking the other day, how I signed up for an AYSO Storm Team, and someone said, you're signing up? I said, of course I am, you know, I'm gonna coach until my youngest is all the way through to, to college, so I have four and a half more years, you get four and a half more years with me, so thank you. And last, I just wanna thank my beautiful bride for supporting, who's in the room over here, Nikki, who supports, has supported me through all my preparing for practices and games and sometimes my stressful situations, so, thank you, love. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so that's certainly tough to follow, Mark stole a lot of the high points, but, yeah, so thank you very much for everything you've done for the sports programs, in particular most recently getting the lights up at Burton Stadium has been really huge this year, they've come in a lot of really good use, so thank you very much for all that support. As Mark said, you know, there's a lot of reasons why, why we run these programs, but teaching the kids the life lessons, you know, giving them community, giving them confidence is really sort of, really at the top of the list. I coached basketball, actually, just this past season with Ben Mosawir, who's in the audience here, and after the end of the season, we got an email from, from one of the moms saying that, you know, her kid, you know, she sometimes had a little bit of a tough time, but the confidence that we were able to instill and the positive attitude that we were able to instill in her, she thought, she said that, you know, the repercussions of that, we would probably never know the end of, so, you know, that's, that's the type of stuff and the reason why we coach. I'd like to thank everyone, we have a lot of our AYSO board here, so thank you very much to everyone here in the, in the, in the audience, we run a great program, we have about 1,200 kids in the program, so about a third of the school district is, you know, plays AYSO soccer, so it's, it's, it's a really good time, so, thank you very much.
All right, I just wanted to thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council and everything. I was very touched by this and very honored by it. I love being a part of the community, and San Carlos Youth Softball is just a fabulous program, we have a great board of directors that I work with that makes it all possible, it's not just me alone, it's a great team effort, and it's just as, you know, the other guys were saying, this is a great life skills program for the kids, and we've done, you know, really also, we've done a good job with, you know, getting the kids out in the fields and participating, especially after COVID. Also, I'd like to thank Amy Newby with the partnership, with everything that we do with the fields and everything, she really helps us, helps to make it possible. And I'd also like to thank my daughter, Lily, for her love and passion for softball was what's got me into the league in the first place, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations again, to my colleagues, I see Vice Mayor Dugan would like to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, yeah, just briefly, you know, I coached Pop Warner football for just a couple of years, and I just want to shout out to all of our youth coaches, it's, it's a tremendous time commitment, but it means so much to the kids, and I liked the comment that it really does build community out there, so thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to quickly add to what the Vice Mayor just said, I too wanna thank all of you and thank the mayor for recognizing you, I think youth sports is such an important part of our community, and, boy, is it a labor of love, and a lot of hours go into it by you all and the coaches, and I've enjoyed working with all three of you, and really wanna thank you for what you've done to improve sports in our community, and I also know the three of you are terrific dads, so thanks for everything you do in our community.
Okay, next we have Council Communications and Announcements. No, we're good, okay. Oh, I should say, there any public comment on this other item, I forgot to ask if there are any slips?
I did not receive any public comments for the City Coins.
Okay, thank you. Nothing on Council Communications. All right, so now we'll move on to the Consent Calendar. Is there any changes to the Consent Calendar? Okay, I don't see any, so we will, I'll take a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we approve the Consent Calendar items A through B and, I need to read these correct, Mr. City Attorney.
You picked it.
Okay. I'm colorblind, I can't see red, so, what's on here? All right, Item C, adopting an ordinance number 1605, an ordinance of the City Council, City of San Carlos, establishing Chapter 12.40 Pedestrian Malls to Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places in the San Carlos Municipal Code, and Item D, adopting ordinance number 1606, an item of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18, zoning, Sections 18.5, General Site Regulations 18.21, Performance Standards, and 18.28, zoning clearance for consistency with the County of San Mateo's Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for the environs of San Carlos Airport. And Item E, adopting ordinance number 1607, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, approving the 501 Industrial Road Project Plan Development Plan and related zoning map amendment to rezone the project site from landmark commercial to planned development at 1501 Industrial Road, APN 046-090-410, and Item F, adopting ordinance number 1608, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, approving a development agreement with Holly Hotel Group LLC for the 501 Industrial Road Hotel Project.
I'll second, thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
All right, Crystal, I have a motion and a second, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Rapp?
Yes, all right. So next we're onto Item 8, which is Reorganization, I had a few remarks to make, but before I do that, I just wanted to recognize we have a few current and former elected officials in here, and so I wanted to just thank them for being here, I'm gonna try to go this way, so I don't miss everyone, if I do, raise your hand, I can't see everybody. We have former San Carlos Mayor Mark Olbert, Redwood City Councilmember Chris Sturkin, former Foster City Mayor Sanjay Gomani, close enough, all right, all right, you can correct me later, Foster City Councilmember Stacy Menendez, and I think that's on in the side, and then in the back going here, we have City, San Carlos School Board Trustee Neil Layton, State Senator Josh Becker, we have, are you mayor yet, Maurice, or not, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor of Millbrae, Maurice Goodman, we have former San Carlos Mayor Andy Klein, former Belmont Mayor Charles Stone, representing Assembly Member Diane Pappen, Dave Berudo, and did I miss anybody? How'd I do? I think I got everybody, all right. Thank you for being here. All right, so before we move on to, I just wanted to say a few words, and my wife was very good about telling me to keep it short, so I will do my best. First, I just wanna thank my colleagues on the council, and I wanna thank the city staff for their support. We are so fortunate in San Carlos with the professional staff, the seasoned staff, the tenured staff that we have, they are amazing, and I think being on council, understanding how much work they put in, how much effort they put in, how much they put up with my calls and emails and texts at all hours, is quite impressive. As I noted, Crystal, at like quarter to seven, I was like, can you please print this for me, because I'm running late, or just being able to work with our community on important issues that we're working on around parks, around, you know, our public works team when we had all the flooding this year, you know, and in our community development, our planning, I mean, I could go on and on about how great our staff is, and we're really fortunate, City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office was so good that we decided to bring him in in-house, we couldn't have him outside anymore, plus I think people were, had so much work for him, were like, Greg, come on! So, I really wanna thank the staff for all their great work that they do, and, but most of all, I wanna also thank my family, thank my amazing wife, Allison, thank you for your love, your encouragement, and your brilliant ideas, I wouldn't do this without you, and to my three RackStar daughters, I might have to like coin that, Phoebe, Jane, and Lydia, and also to my parents and my mother-in-law, thank you for your love and support, this has and will always be a Team Rack effort. So, we faced many challenges over the last year, I will say my first meeting was an emergency meeting to declare a state of emergency with all the floods, but thank goodness, things got better after that. But a priority for me was focusing on recreation in our community, and we've made significant progress in that area. We've updated our, we're updating our Parks Master Plan to ensure that we can meet the needs of our community today and into the future, we're expanding trail access into Devonshire Canyon, Pulgas Ridge, and to Water Dog Park in Belmont, thank you Belmont for having part of your trail come into San Carlos, so we can just connect there. We officially designated more park space at Big Canyon Eaton Parks, and I look forward to connecting, working with my colleagues over the next year to finalize all our trail connections. I was recent, asked recently what I was most proud of, and that answer was easy for me, creating a pedestrian plaza on Laurel Street as a centerpiece for a transformed downtown. I appreciate the work of the council and the staff to really make this a reality, and I thank the community for their strong support, I don't think I've ever gotten so many positive emails before on any issue. I've had a couple occasions where I've talked to people and people just started clapping about it, so it's, usually people yell at us, but this time it's, it was kinda nice. Now, I'm sure this, I talked about this at my first City Council meeting, Council Retreat in 2019, I'm sure it was brought up by other people and other councils and others years before, but it's today that it's a reality, and it is this council that did it. So, I'm excited about the next stage as we reimagine and transform our downtown for the future. Finally, as you know, I started a new tradition, which I believe will be continued, to recognize our community volunteers. I have an inside information from our future mayor that they will continue to do that, so that's a good sign. So, I wanna, it's a good opportunity really to thank our community volunteers and present them with a community, community, City Coin. So, we're so fortunate to have such a wonderful community of volunteers that make our city such a great place to live, work, and play. Now, being mayor's a lot of extra work, but it's also fun, as I mentioned, to get to, actually, I forgot a prop I have, I have to, hold on one second. Okay, let me start over, being mayor's a lot of work, but it's also a lot of fun, like getting, throw out the first pitch at Little League, as I mentioned, and having some kids there going, oh my god, I touched the mayor's hand, which was, you know, quite, quite something. Two, talking to about a hundred second and third grade students at Charter just last week, and asking all of them to, about a hundred of them standing in line to sign these little yellow guys that we give away, so I did about a hundred of Mayor Adam on there, but the best one was when the kids said, well, can you put your real signature on here? So I said, sure, I did that, and can you write to Camden? I was like, yes, I can do that, so. So, we get to do a lot of fun stuff, too. It's truly been a rewarding experience and an honor to serve as the mayor of the city good living, and I look forward to supporting the new mayor and continue to serve the community in the next, in 2024, so, thank you. All right, with that, I will call for nominations for mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate John Dugan as the mayor of City of San Carlos for next year.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Crystal, we have a motion and a second, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Rapp?
Yes. All right, the motion passes five to zero. Congratulations. We gotta go work some oath now. All right.
Okay, Vice, Mayor John Dugan, if you've raised your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge your duties for which you're about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, maybe the view is better over here, I'm not sure. All right, maybe the view is better over here, I'm not sure. Where did my, it's fine. Yeah, thank you.
That's me rushing through things.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, so, yes, I have some remarks, and then we will open it up to public comment. So, thank you. My gosh, just what, what an amazing honor. It's always an honor to serve San Carlos, and I just love this town, I really do. I thank my colleagues on the council just for their support and guidance and wisdom, and really thank Ron in particular, twice mayor. He could have chosen to be mayor at this time, and he graciously handed the baton to me, and I appreciate that, and I've learned a lot from Ron, so that means a lot. Mark Olbert, thank you. You were here a moment ago. There he is. Mark was the twice former mayor, he's the first guy who tapped me on the shoulder and said, hey, John, I'd like to see you on our council, so wouldn't be here without Mark. Andy Klein, Laura Touchele, Brian Best, they helped me stay out of trouble through my campaign, and I definitely wouldn't be here without them, so thank you so much. Really appreciate it. It was a lot of work, I think more than, they knew how much work it was. I think Brian and I were figuring it out as we went along. Jeff Melby, our city manager, thank you. You know, I've been on council three years now, and I think I'm somewhere between a master's and a PhD in a local government, and that's my professor over there, so thank you, Jeff. To Jeff, this is a family business. The depths of experience and knowledge and what he brings is amazing, and it's a big part of what, why San Carlos works as well as it does. So thank you, Jeff, and of course, the amazing team, the amazing staff you've put together. It's, you know, we're all lucky to work with you, and San Carlos is lucky for what you've built, so thank you for that. Also, thank Al Savay and Lisa Porras of our planning division. I got going on the planning commission, and they kept me out of trouble there and kind of showed me what this city stuff's all about, and most of what we do seems, one way or another, to involve land use, so that was good background, and I learned a lot through that time, so thank you very much for that. And thank you for all the other electeds in the room. You know, this is, this can be a tough job, and I got to admit, it's a pretty steep learning curve, and at first, you do kind of think, hey, I'm kind of figuring this out on my own, and then you start to meet some of the other electeds, especially, you know, throughout San Mateo County, and just very generous people, very open, you can talk to any of them, call them up with questions, and really, it's one of the surprisingly great aspects is just getting to know the other council members around the county, and how much you learn from what they've figured out. And most of all, really, thank, thank my family. My, my mother made it in from Iowa, thank you for that trip. So much love and support, just total support. I had a terrific upbringing, thank you, Mom. True definition of unconditional love, and you're still my biggest fan, so thank you for that. And Julia, nothing but, but love and support from Julia, and I seem to show up every five or six years with some other new crazy idea of what I want to do next, and somehow, she just supports me and comes along on the ride, and, and that, you know, I couldn't do any of this without, without all that you do for me and for our family, and you are an inspiration as well, so love you and thank you for that. And my three children, so my oldest Jake has literally, his college final started at 7:00 PM, just like this meeting, so he is grinding away somewhere right now. He definitely wanted to be here, and our middle child, Jacqueline, is dancing with Tulsa Ballet. We had her back a week ago to perform in Julia's Nutcracker. They wouldn't give her up again this week, so she's down there performing another Nutcracker. There's a lot of Nutcrackers. And then Joya, my youngest, thank you for being here, Joya, it means a lot, and you know, it is a sacrifice, what we do, you know, we're used to doing Sunday stuff as a family, and boy, there's some Sundays that, you know, somehow, I found myself having to go through a 1,200-page packet. Thanks, Jeff. You know, it's a lot of paperwork at times, and that can be a distraction, and it has taken me away, and it can be a sacrifice, and sometimes, it probably leaves me a little stressed out, so thank you for your patience, and really, really couldn't do it without my family. And everyone, just thank you for being here, and to San Carlos, just such, such an amazing community, and, you know, why do we get involved? Why do we want to do this stuff? And, you know, it's like, just last week, we sat our Centennial Advisory Committee. We're turning 100 as a city in 2025, so we're gearing up to celebrate that fact, but it was unbelievable, just the folks that, you know, I mean, we have so many great festivals, events, just things we do as a city, and it all just comes from our service organizations and just people who pour their heart into this stuff, and that was really a crystallized moment, like interviewing our Centennial Advisory Committee, because it was just like a who's who of amazing San Carlos' and, you know, Citizens of the Year from decades ago. It was amazing, and there's just so much going on in San Carlos, it's just really great to be involved. And, you know, I'll just share, when I was, we have, he's not here this evening, but Don Eden, I think he was a three-time mayor of San Carlos, and him and his family were a really big effort behind getting our hometown days to where it is right now, which is so amazing. And he just told me that, and, you know, when I chose to run, I had to make my pilgrimage down to his office, right, and, and I go see Don, and, you know, he's kind of a gruff guy, but, and he had some things, but he said, you know, John, when it all boils down to, your job is to build community if you sit on a city council. And I was like, yeah, I get that, but, you know, there's a lot of other things, too, right? And, and you know what? It really, those words have really kept coming back around to me, because no, he's right. That's really all our job is, is to build community, and I think about that, and it occurs, I think, to all of us as we make all these decisions, that really, you know, we have to make decisions. Sometimes, people aren't happy with all of them, but decisions have to be made, but it's really like, you know, what is it that we're doing that's building community? And we do a lot of that here in San Carlos, and I'm just proud to be a part of that for this, this period in time. So what's going on? What am I focused on? You know, a couple weeks ago, Adam mentioned historic for San Carlos, closing our pedestrian mall, super fun. We're going to have, you know, that was, you know, pandemic-era experiment, right? But we have now done it, closed forever, and that's not easy to do here in California or probably anywhere. So really proud of that, and now we're in the middle of our specific plan for the downtown, and just, you know, what, what an incredible project and opportunity just to bring our, our, you know, the very focus of our community to the next level. So we're, you know, having fun with that, lots of good ideas are coming around, and I hope as we work through that process, you know, Andy Klein was the first one to mention, hey, we need to find ways to celebrate our centennial and make it more permanent, and, you know, it occurs to me, our Laurel Street Pedestrian Mall doesn't really roll off the tongue, so maybe that might end up being our Centennial Plaza, courtesy of Andy's good, good thinking on that. So it's just fun, fun stuff like that we get to figure out now. And then, you know, our east side, there's just so much going on over there. We're turning into a major life science center. We've got very large developers like Alexandria Sabrato, they're putting up the buildings that we see, and, you know, there's more coming. Our east side has been zoned industrial, zoned for significant development for decades, and that's coming now to our town. And it is good for a community. Commercial development ends up paying a lot of bills, ends up generating a lot of public benefit for a city. So, you know, we have zoned it for that, and it's coming, and, you know, that is something we have decided as a community, and we do a lot of things to, you know, what I stand for in all of that is, let's make sure these developments don't just work for the developer, but that they work for our entire community, all of San Carlos. And so that's a big part of what we've been up to, is, you know, first, we ratchet up all our linkage fees. This is, you know, if you're just bringing jobs to town and you're not bringing housing or childcare, we would like them to, but they often don't, and then we end up with significant money, tens of millions of dollars, that we then get to go do things that do support our community. That's how we've gotten the Walnut Street Studios built, 100% affordable, 22 units. We're getting Cherry Street Commons built, that's 33 family-sized units. That's coming from this east side development, and that's important. And we also just purchased an acre down on our border with Redwood City where the Carls Jr. is. That could be up to 100 units of 100% affordable that we really need as a community. And we're also doing a lot on housing. It's been a top goal of us as a city since I've been involved. I think we all feel it in our lives, we all, our families struggle with housing, people we know struggle with housing, our essential workers struggle, our teachers, firefighters, sheriffs, you know, and it's a tough community. We also like, where do our own children live? Where can they live? It's a question we have to think about. So we're doing a lot in housing, and then the state came along and, you know, has now required us to do even more on housing, so we have done a lot of upzoning, a lot of development is coming to El Camino and in our downtown area. And I realize, that's actually a lot, that's a lot of stuff going on. We've, we've got the development on the east side, we have a lot of housing coming, and we have chosen to do that as a community, and in many ways, we need to do that on the housing front. But I can understand how some people feel like that's a lot of development, a lot of change, a lot coming fast, and I do get that. And the, and so that really brings me to what, what my priority is going to be for next year, which is, I think people understand the density is coming, but what they want to know is that the city is going to continue to work and function. They can drive through town, and our streets work, and they can get out to 101, and there's parking in our downtown. So my, my, you know, and as a mayor, you kind of get sort of one headline thing you can work on. Sarah, I appreciated, really pushed on mental health in the middle of our pandemic, especially around our students, that was very important. Adam, recreational access, and he got a lot of good stuff done there. And what I intend to focus on is our traffic flow improvements, so very, very sexy topic, I know. But I really think that's what we need to do, because our city is progressing, it's developing, there is more density coming, and the city needs to be able to work through that, through that process, and there's things we can do. So I'm pleased to announce, we're going to focus and work hard to make sure our streets and traffic signals work as best they can. We are kicking off right now a traffic signals analysis and master plan. This is a cool stuff we get to do, too. And forming a new city council subcommittee with my colleague, Councilmember McDowell, Sarah, and really bring more focus on our traffic flow circulation, and not just traffic signals, but pedestrian safety, safe routes to school. Anyone who knows me knows I'm a big proponent of more sidewalks in town, I love what we did on San Carlos Avenue. Safe routes to school, we did a formal study, how do our kids get to school, and how do they, can they do that safer? And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the more we can do, like, what, what better thing for a city to do than to make sure their kids can get to and from school safely? So that's part of this as well, and I think there's a lot we can accomplish with that. And I also think this might be our first major step into becoming a smart city, you know, I'm looking forward to learning more about what that can entail and what the opportunities are, are there. Also excited to continue our other good work, the downtown plan, our northeast area-specific plan, this is the commercial stuff, north of Holly, there's an opportunity there for that to be a real, modern mixed-use district, kind of along the lines of Bay Meadows with real housing and amenities, and so that's, that's an interesting project we're working on. The east side vision plan keeps rolling, we're going to keep working to get good public benefits out of our, our developers. Cool stuff's coming out of that. And help continue Adam's strong push for more recreational access. He's laid the groundwork, but we got to get a little bit more done there. And then North Crestview Park, the planning underway for a park up there, and that's another project I'm, I'm pretty stoked about. It's nearly five acres, it's relatively flat, it's at the top of Crestview, and, you know, we just flat-out need more fields and courts in town, so we do have a plan underway to get that out of, you know, develop that park more fully. And there's real history up there. Most people know that. In World War II, that was an army post up there. They trained war dogs for the Pacific Theater, and there's always been talk of finding a way to honor that history up there, and, and I agree, we should honor that, but as a veteran, I also think we should honor all our veterans, and I think that is a great location with that history for a proper San Carlos Veterans Memorial. That's, we're one of the few cities without a solid veterans memorial, and we have many amazing veterans in town, and the American Legion's represented here tonight. I appreciate your service, and, you know, once again, North Crestview Park doesn't really roll off the tongue, so maybe that, that could become San Carlos's Veterans Memorial Park at some point. So, like I said, there's so much good stuff happening in San Carlos these days, I really could go on and on. Many of you probably think I already have. I get excited about this stuff, but so many great ways all of us can get involved. Reach out if you want to get involved more in anything you've heard, or, you know, just want to know more about it. There's, these are really impactful times for San Carlos, and our community spirit is truly, truly what makes San Carlos so special, and, and so, thank you for coming. This is a real, a real honor. There'll be a reception after this, hope to chat with folks, and there's an event after that that I know I'm looking forward to. And so just a final thank you to all of you for the true honor of serving our city of very good living. Thank you. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. And now I think we will open the floor to public comment.
So I have two speaker slips at the moment. First up is Stephanie Anderson, and then you'll be followed by David Berudo. So yes, please, please, press the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Anderson, and I am here on behalf of San Mateo County Supervisor Ray Mueller, who is your district representative on the board of supervisors. Supervisor Mueller greatly values the work you do here, and wanted to make sure someone from our office was here to represent him and show how much we appreciate your service and formally recognize your impact in the community. So on behalf of the county and Supervisor Mueller, I am here to present this county certificate honoring, honoring Adam Rack for all of your service to the City of San Carlos as mayor this year. Thank you for your dedication to civic engagement and improving the quality of life for all of the residents in San Carlos. We appreciate all of your hard work in the commercial development in the east San Carlos area, including the new hotel, very exciting. Thank you for your passion and your work on improving our downtown and the closure of the 700 block of Laurel, very excited about that. And thank you mostly for highlighting and recognizing our community volunteers, our youth volunteers, and all the nonprofit organizations for all their efforts. to really make the city of good living thrive. Um, as we saw tonight, we had such a great group in here and, um, it's, I just, so we appreciate that you recognize all of, all of our community. Um, so with that, we, um, appreciate your leadership this last year and the board extends its gratitude and best wishes for your continued service on the San Carlos City Council. Um, so thank you, Adam. And I'd like to congratulate, um, Mayor John Dugan, and we look forward to supporting you next year as mayor.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have actually Senator John Becker, Josh Becker.
Well, thank you. Can I go slightly longer than two minutes? Do I get slightly longer? Uh, I just want to say, uh, first of all, you got to ask the mayor. Yeah.
Yeah, by all means, Josh.
First of all, it's just wonderful to see, uh, so many council members and former council members from across the region and from, uh, the history of San Carlos who have contributed so much to this city. It's a real tribute to, uh, all of you, that so many of your colleagues have come from across, uh, the county. And I also want to say I appreciated the sports awards. I got a little nostalgic, uh, myself, having, you know, coached my son through eighth grade. Now my son's a senior, so I'm, I'm at the very end of that and, uh, brought back a lot of memories and I know how much time it is. So it was wonderful to, to see that as well. I just want to say, maybe I'm, I'm kind of moved by the holiday spirit, but I want to say, uh, something that doesn't, uh, a word we don't say much in, in politics, which is love. And you are all do what you do because you love this city. And everyone is all here because you also love this city and you love and appreciate the work that the council is doing. And, uh, this is particularly fun. I'm glad my schedule worked out so I could be here. Adam is someone I've known for, uh, many, many years. I won't date us, but, uh, since before, um, either of us was elected and, you know, Adam is someone who, um, you know, there's, there's people here in our area who get involved in national politics and then there's people here again at local, and there's not many people who do both. And Adam is someone who's recognized nationally, knows everyone in DC and, uh, also chose to really dive into the community and give of yourself here. And we're all the better for it and greatly appreciate your time and all you've done for the city. And John, I've gotten to know more recently, but my fellow Stanford Law grad, uh, but we didn't know each other through, before this process, but I've really enjoyed our, our talks, uh, particularly on housing, which is a, can be a difficult issue in this area, but I really appreciate your thoughtfulness about it and how, uh, San Carlos is addressing that issue and, you know, trying to put density where it should be and trying to make sure, as you said, the traffic signal, everything else works for everyone else in, in the city. Just that in the, uh, uh, in the spirit of what we're trying to do, the state, I'm trying to do the state level, make sure the government actually works. So I really appreciate that and appreciate all of you who I've gotten to know, the rest of the council members I've gotten to know, uh, over the years for all you do. So thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Adam. Congratulations, John. And just nice, uh, very glad I could be here.
Good evening, David Berudo. I'm District Director for Assemblymember Diane Pappin. Wasn't expecting to speak, but then I saw the state senator, I said, oh man, I can't let him get away with that and just not represent my boss. So, so here I am. Really just here to relay our congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, and to Adam, uh, our heartfelt thanks for your service. I brought you no paper or any coins, so sorry about that, but you get nothing. You're a veteran. It's okay. You, you got it. Uh, you know, I've been coming to this chamber off and on for about a quarter century now and, um, standing at the back, I actually got a different view. And I realized, you know, this chamber is really small, actually, in comparison to some of your colleagues. And I, I figured you can't fit a lot of angry people in here. So well played on that, you know, in that regard.
Don't have any.
So someone just said the key word is that, I actually don't really have that many. Uh, and that's a testament, I think, to your leadership. Uh, I know Adam, like you and I are pretty much constant contact and, uh, about any variety of issues, city, state, federal, whatever we can work on, uh, together. In fact, you, Mr. Mayor, you talked about safe routes to school and then I know the assembly member got a grant, you know, state grant for that this past year for San Carlos. See? So, uh, you know, we work together and I think your leadership has demonstrated that, you know, you, you do push the envelope occasionally, but do it at, at pace with your community. You know your community well. So really congratulations for that, Adam. That, that has a lot to do with you, you know, your leadership style, you know, um, being available, being accessible, knowing your community and being funny, you know, most of the time. I'm not going to ask for your autograph. Uh, the only criticism I have of this evening is the clerk. So when you swear in to your council members, um, you know, they have to, they should be repeating it back to you and you have to read in possibly long segments, so they can't do that. You got them off the hook. I mean, that was, anyway.
I'd be terrible at that.
Congratulations and we're looking forward to working with you.
I do not have any other cards, but if you'd like to, uh, make a comment, uh, please feel free to approach the podium at this time.
All right. Well, thank you, Crystal. Um, do any of my colleagues have any comments? Uh, Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, do I call councilmember Rack now or do I still say?
Just a council.
Councilmember, councilmember? Your role, Adam, I'll just call you Adam. Adam, your role as a mayor, you have led by building trust, strengthening bonds and fostering a sense of community. You are kind, honest and easy to connect with. As a new councilmember, I appreciate your willingness to listen to the perspective of others. And I have a funny story to share with you. I was at the farmer's market during the city booth and a young boy around eight came, came running and said, "Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor." And Adam just happened to be at the farmer's market that day and, and, and he, he, it was like he saw Taylor Swift. He was just like, "Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor." And Adam stopped, he went back to where the boy was and he posed for a picture and he made that boy's day. And that's the kind of person you are. So thank you for that. During your term as mayor, you made some tough decisions. You were not afraid to tackle issues affecting our community, regardless of how difficult or unpopular they were. Um, some of these issues were you opened up trails and allowed North Crestview to be an active park. You approved commercial development east San Carlos in a mindful way. And Mayor Rack, oh, Mr. Rack, you initiated the dialogue years ago and envisioned a more lively downtown. With your vision, the 700 block of Laurel Street will become a pedestrian mall. That will offer many residents and visitors a popular gathering space to socialize, shop and gather. So thank you. And thank you for making my first year so easy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with Adam. Uh, Adam and I have worked on a lot of things together over the years. I think the first thing we, we worked on together was, uh, handling the, uh, response from the business community on Laurel Street during the pandemic and what to do with, uh, all of the businesses who had issues and wanted to expand and that sort of thing. And, and Adam will remember that when we met with the owner of, uh, town one morning and he took us around town and we realized that the, uh, that the breadth and the scope of what we were doing was, was pretty important and we needed to get it right. And Adam has worked very hard to get it right. Regarding his mayorship, uh, he, Sarah was a tough act to follow and I was kind of worried about Adam because Sarah kind of broke the mold, you know? She was the prototype of a great mayor. But he, you know, Adam, true to himself, he's different, quirky, but enjoyable to watch. Uh, and he got it right. He got, he got here on time, all the time, and he was very proud of it and we were very proud of that as well. But he also just did a great job as, um, uh, as mayor and I want to thank you, Adam. You've, you've, you've really represented us well. So again, congratulations and, uh, also welcome to, you know, being at the back of the line again, so. And on to John. I don't know if it's true, but I heard a rumor, John, that they've run out of city coins in the last year, so you might want to talk to, to Jeff and find out if you can have some more minted. But some people know, uh, a year ago I was, uh, selected as vice mayor and, uh, as John mentioned, would have been sworn in tonight as mayor, but, uh, it didn't take me long. About a month into it, I, I realized that I needed to look at my priorities in life and I would not have stepped aside if I didn't think that, uh, that, that John was ready. And he's been demonstrating that all along. We've been on subcommittees together. He asks just great questions and he's not afraid. He doesn't back down from things that he believes in. And I, when I say that, I say that, and that's in a good way. He, he knows what he's about and he knows what he wants, but he does listen. He takes, he takes other people's thoughts into consideration. He and I have had some pretty strong disagreements on housing and other things, but, um, I think, I hope that we've ended up respecting each other more. I've certainly respected him more and he's made me think on a number of occasions. Really, there are only two reasons that I decided to step aside and their names are Alex and Kevin. Uh, they're my, are Gail's of my grandchildren, that we have decided are, you know, the two most important things in our life right now. Uh, second behind that is Gail. She thinks that she's third or fourth, but she really is second and council is actually third. But I, I've, as I said, um, John is focused, he's intelligent, um, he's a good listener, he's dedicated and above all else, he's a good man and I think we're going to be led well by him. So congratulations, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll start by, um, expressing my deep gratitude to former Mayor Matt Rack, um, for his stellar year of serving as mayor. Um, Adam, I am grateful for your work on increasing the public's access to our open space and expanding our trails network. During the pandemic, I know many in our community, um, really developed a newfound appreciation for our open space and our hiking trails. Um, we recognize the many positive benefits, not only for our health, but our mental health and getting out there in nature and enjoying our open space. Um, and your work, Adam, expanding our access to public parks is, is so important and it will, um, be everlasting. So, um, thank you for your legacy, um, and your work on that. Um, I also want to thank you for your work recognizing our city volunteers with city coins. Um, that was really a highlight of this year. Um, I loved seeing so many beloved community members recognized over the course of this last year for their work in our community. Um, and serving as mayor is a huge job. You led the city with respect and compassion and collaboration and I commend you for a job well done. So thank you for your service. And for John, um, John, I'm really looking forward to your year ahead as mayor. I have been so impressed with your thoughtful leadership as a city council member these last few years. I think your background as a planning commissioner gives you some really unique insight into where our city needs to go. Um, and I know per your remarks that you're going to have a very busy year ahead, um, as mayor, but I, I really look forward to your continued leadership. So congratulations.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Um, just, I want to first thank you for all your support last year. Um, and I look forward to supporting you, uh, in the coming year to help advance your goals and your objectives. I think they're important things and important work that we have to do. I'm going to, before I get into some of the more specifics, I want to get into one light thing about how John and I really got to know each other is our daughters, um, and our, and we're at, so my daughter was at the same ballet school as, um, John's kids and John's wife. And they do the Nutcracker every year. And somehow John figured out how to do this better because they have, for the party scene, they have the parents come and dance and participate in the party scene. I somehow figured out to just be one of the party dads, so out there in Victorian costume and everything else, exposed to everybody. John figured out how to be the bear who was covered in a complete costume head to toe, so nobody knew he was really there doing it. So.
Can't be proven.
So, um, but John and I, I mean, we also took some time during that time when John was on planning and, and things to talk about, you know? I think the in-between sets, what were sort of rehearsals and things. So it really was an opportunity to get to know John and was really happy to see him move from planning to city council and be able to work with him. And, um, I will say, John, thank you. When I put the subcommittee together for the Trails Committee, um, I was really happy to have you join me on that because I felt like your passion around this, your work around that and helping to really push that issue has been fantastic. And I don't know that we would have been, uh, where we are today without it. So I'm looking forward to supporting you to get that through the finish line. And, um, I really appreciate your leadership on housing. You push us on things around housing. You ask the right questions. Um, and I do, having sat in that chair, having you here, asking some of the questions that we get are, uh, it's important. It's, it's informative for me when we're on issues that were, um, are challenging, we're trying to make a decision like we did on the biosafety labs. Your line of questionings and the things you asked really helped solidify my position on it. And, um, it was good because I didn't have to ask those questions then, so thank you. Um, but really your leadership and is going to continue and I look forward to supporting you and working with you. Um, and I think you're going to be a great mayor. So thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Means a lot. And Councilmember Venkatesh.
Well, being the new person, I didn't give my comments for you. So Mayor Dugan, congratulations. I know you all listened and worked, work hard for our community. Our community is fortunate to have a leader who is honest, has the ability to effectively solve problems and builds strong relationships. I look forward to collaborating with you, the residents of San Carlos and my colleagues, to make a positive impact to the place we all co-call home, San Carlos.
Thank you, Pranita. Appreciate that. Terrific. If there are no further public comments, then we will move on to a, uh, the next item of business is a call for a nomination for our new vice mayor.
Um, Mayor Dugan, I move to nominate Sarah McDowell as the city of San Carlos Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, before we take a vote on that, are there any public comments?
Uh, I don't have any slips for this item. If there's anyone out there who'd like to make a comment at this time, can approach the podium. I think we're good.
And would any of my colleagues like to make a comment before we vote? All right. We will take a vote on this, Crystal.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Terrific. Sarah will now be sworn in and then she'll take her seat as our new vice mayor.
Okay, Sarah McDowell, if you can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of, or purpose of evasion? And that you will well faithfully discharge the duties for which you're about to enter?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to switch over again.
Of course I do. Thank you. Have to get used to this new seat here. I would just like to thank my colleagues for this honor tonight. The last time I was sworn in as vice mayor was via Zoom in the middle of the pandemic, which is a really unique and challenging time for us all. And it's really great to be sworn in in person this time with such a full audience and so many smiling faces. So thanks, everyone, for being here. As vice mayor, my role is to support the mayor. And I'm looking forward to working with and supporting Mayor Dugan in the year ahead. I am also really grateful to serve on a council that is collaborative and respectful. And while we sometimes do indeed disagree with each other, we know that our most important job is to serve the citizens of San Carlos. And we all work together to move the city of good living forward. And that's something that we should all be very proud of. So I'm looking forward to a very productive 2024. And thank you again.
Terrific. Would any of my colleagues like to make a comment? Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. I just wanted to congratulate Vice Mayor McDowell for her election into this new role. I look forward to working with you. I know that over the last few years, being with you on council now for five years, it's been, I would concur with you that it certainly is a collaborative council and one I continue to look forward to working with you on. So congratulations.
Terrific. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to add my congratulations to Sarah. She's a veteran now. And I know that you will, I know you'll support John, but I'm sure you will not hesitate to let him know when you think that he's gotten off track.
Please.
Or maybe thinking of things that you might, you think maybe he should think differently about. So I know that you're anything but shy when it comes to expressing your opinion. And you always do a very good and professional job of it. So I'm looking forward to having both of you as our leaders this next year.
Terrific. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Congratulations, Sarah. And I know you can hold your own. So I'm just looking forward to this community and what, all the good things you're going to do, both of you. So congratulations.
Great. And I'll just add, congratulations, Sarah. It was inspirational watching you as a mayor two years ago. And I'm honored to have you as a vice mayor this year and look forward to continue to learn from you. And I appreciate your comments about how well our council works together. I'm excited to continue the good work that we're doing. So thank you. Great. Great. Unless we have a public comment, we will move on to our second to last item, which is agenda setting. Do any of my colleagues have anything they want to submit for our future agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to general public comment. This is public comment for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda, may do so at this time. Crystal, do we have any items submitted for general public comment?
I do not have any slips. But again, if you're, you'd like to make a public comment, now's your chance. Good. Thank you.
All right. Very good. And then we're going to move on to item 11, adjournment. And we are adjourned. And I invite everyone to join us in the foyer for a reception. Thank you for coming out.